I'd like to call this meeting to order. Pursuant, what's the... Thank you. Master in our law, chapter thirty-eight, section twenty, hereby informing all attendees that a video and audio recording are being made of the meeting. First up, we have any public comment? Kathy? Nothing? Nothing going on? Next, I guess we can go talk about, finally, the state has approved our series of bylaw change updates. Party?
And I'm buying beers afterwards.
Okay. We're all excited.
It's only been, what, six years? Something like that?
It feels it. I mean, we've... Let's see, you were on the board and off the board in the time and back on the board in the time that we've been through this. So, we finally got through. I mean, I think main thing, big things are our site plan and special permit process is going to be changed now.
Yeah.
To watch on.
You want to talk about each one separately, or do you want to just go over the list?
Do you have the list?
I don't, I don't. But I do know that the site plan process is going to be more elaborate, more work for Beth than it's been in the past. It's going to be more like special permit is going to be after, you know, a findings and where. It's not quite like a special permit because it won't be recorded in the town, in the land records, but it will be a very similar set of documents. So, if we go back later and we say, what were the conditions that we imposed on Project X? You'd find that a lot more easily than we have done in the past.
Strictly on a planning board, site plan approval, or also an A and R?
You can... AR is what?
A and R.
Oh, oh, A and R. Is that approval not required? No, no, we didn't change anything on that. That's not even in our bylaw.
No.
That's a subdivision bylaw. No, but we, we made the process for site plan quite a bit more... A little articulated, a lot more details about how to do it. And in some respects, it's more imposes new requirements that we had not been following in the past. So, Beth, you know, maybe you and I want to talk about how we would do that. But I don't think it's going to require anything of you that you don't already do for special permits.
Timeline is better. The timeline is more defined.
We get longer time to review site plans.
Yep.
Not infinite, but I think it's six or nine months, something like that.
Hundred and twenty days, I think we went to if we needed to.
It was thirty for any, any project that was a project by right. So, and we didn't even have time to give notice to the other boards and hear back from them in thirty days.
Yeah, that was problematic.
That was the first thing that set us off.
Yep. And Beth, are those going to be all updated and put online shortly then?
Yeah.
They are already? Including, did we look into our, the one that had gotten passed with pertaining to DCBC with the height restriction? Remember, we talked about it? And that never got added into the online or three sixty for some reason? Okay?
What was that?
Remember that one that we?
I do.
Oh, we remember the town meeting that, that there was very, it was very raucous?
Yeah, yeah.
And...
Oh, we, we made changes for the price chopper.
Price chopper, yes. We changed the height required restriction.
Yeah, that's right.
Yep.
Yep.
And that, that passed and it never, that was when Jamie was in and out. And it never got, made it into our, our formal bylaws.
So, did the High Street, the whole area, did that make it in or not? Because that was part of the...
Well, one side of High Street is DCBC.
Right. And did that make it in? But we changed the zoning, not only for price chopper, but also...
All of DCBC.
High, yes, High Street and...
Main Street down to Center Street.
Yes, that's correct.
I think what we did peg, as I remember it, is we, we said that anywhere in DCBC, a developer could get the benefit of any of the limitations that were in the Eagle Mill Zone, that were specially enacted for the Eagle Mill Zone. And so, we indirectly allowed for a greater height that way.
Oh, I remember this very well because I think I didn't care for it. So, I do remember.
Right, but I'm just saying, it wasn't just High Street, it was the whole DCBC.
Yes, but High Street was added to the DCBC.
Was it nothing, was it? No, it was not added. It was always there.
Well, the five-story building that is allowed was also with High Street.
It is part of High Street.
That's correct. And I was rather against that. I mean, I'm just saying, I remember this very well.
There was one there, remember?
I remember it all.
A five-story building on...
There was a four on High Street.
We knocked in, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Right. But anyway, so did that get added in or not? Or that got added in?
It's, it got passed and it should be in there.
Okay.
Passed.
And, okay, thank you.
Should be in the updates. Yep.
Because that created a lot of angst with me. But that's me.
So, we also got the chickens without the roosters.
No, the chickens were fine. We liked the chickens. It wasn't the roosters.
And the one thing that may cause us a little bit more discussion, I think, is the provision about the sign permit review. So, we're, this board is now out of the sign permit review business unless we want to be back in it. And I met with the building commissioner very briefly a couple of weeks ago, and I offered him a draft of a form that I thought he could use to review sign, sign permit applications. Oh, you've seen it? Beth, has everybody seen it?
No, I just brought it.
Okay, so here's what I gave him. And it's just a suggestion. And I think it covers all of the main things that we review when we see a signed permit application. Where is the sign? How far back is it? How big is it? How's it lit? Height? What's the, what's the area? And what's the standard versus the actual in each of those cases?
So, this is a sign permit application, and then there's this form?
Well, this would be the form that I was asking him to send to us after he acts on it.
After the permission decision?
Yeah, yeah. Or denied, I suppose. I guess, I hadn't really thought that through. I don't know, the bylaws says anything about it. But I think they grants it certainly.
Every, everybody was pretty nervous about maintaining some oversight of the building commissioner about this authority, you know? So, we assured everybody that the planning board would still be monitoring.
Post-permit, not?
Post-permit, yeah, post, not, yeah. Yeah, so if one looks really out of line, then we can, I don't know what, I guess...
Repose another amendment to the sign by law.
Yeah, bring it back.
If there's a issue with it, post-permit.
It's all up to him, not much we can do.
It's granted.
It's granted.
It's already granted, right?
So, we can't, we can't deny permit the way we would, would have before. But if we see that a permit has been granted on something that we didn't like, we can change the bylaw.
Change the bylaw, not?
Yeah.
Right.
Not take any kind of action on the permit?
No, probably not. No.
Or conceivably, the building commissioner. This was just a suggestion. And so, I encourage the chair to invite him in at the first opportunity.
We have, I think he's going to be in next meeting.
And maybe he can tell us, you know, what he's decided, whether to use that or something else.
That, and we can go over other, you know, all these updates. But checklist again, well, you know.
Beth, do you think we could get a, one or more copies, printed copies of the current bylaws on by law? Because mine is really out of date now.
Mine, all of ours, yeah.
One for everybody, do you think?
Oh.
I like the printed one.
Matt, you too?
Hello. Unmute. I don't, I don't need, I don't need one. I use the general code on the phone, you know, or the, or the computer.
Okay. Okay.
I'd like to bring a book with me.
I do, too. I'd love one.
We all set with that?
I think that's all I can think of, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. All right. Next up, I did ask, sent you guys around the annual report for Bercher Regional Planning. A lot of people ask or mention, you know, what does Bercher Regional Planning do? And I just wanted to put it out there for everyone to see from block grants to coronavirus action to helping out with the master plan. It's a, there's a, I'm the current treasurer, and believe me, there's a lot of money goes through that organization. Brownfields, it's all done through that. So, there's, a lot goes on. And it's a great resource for all the municipalities, I think.
Could you, could that be on, I thought it was great. Thank you both for doing that for us. Could it be on our website or something, or someplace, somewhere where people could look at it? Because a number of people, I agree, have, have said, well, what do they actually do?
It's a basic PDF if you want to put it.
Is there a basic PDF?
No, it's a PDF file, so it'd be easy to just upload.
Great. Just so people would, because a number of people have come here and asked, what do they actually do? I agree with you both, and I appreciate the fact that you investigated it and you had something.
I do a lot with them, so...
Yes.
You know, they've got a kind of a bad rap around town because they were, they moderated the negotiations for the rest of the river. And now, a lot of people hate them because of that. But it's like, they moderated a meeting, they didn't, you know?
They staffed it.
They, they staffed it.
But they do other things as well.
Oh, well, that was so small.
I did skim through it, so I don't know any. I was impressed that they mentioned COVID and different things that...
There was a lot.
That affected all of us.
Lot of public health is involved, yep.
There's a section there on Meatball, so...
Yes.
The Assistant Planning Board with BEAP applications?
Yep.
Right.
I think you have a lot of them here that would...
No, there is, yeah. And the, also the, oh geez, the, the environmental impact on certain projects they review. So, there's that. And, yep, community economic development is huge.
Now, the planning board wants that resource. You ask for it, or it's, it's part of the protocol, it's got to go to them?
It goes, we go to the, yeah, you can ask, you can...
As a request or?
Yep. As a request to them, whatever, you know, things we need. People put in applications, you know, brownfields, they have the control of the brownfields revolving account. And that's a tough one because it is, you know how that's supposed to work. And then you have, we had the one corporation in Great Barrington there, they defaulted on half of it. So, it set everybody else back, which is unfortunate. But the state came through with some money and replenished it, so that was good. It, it, yeah.
Okay, can I ask a couple of financial questions you may know off the top of your head?
Yeah.
So, as I understand it, the two primary sources of revenue for the Regional Planning Commission are membership fees from towns and the city and state grants.
Yes.
And what are the percentages for each of those roughly? Is it like one to five or, you know, one to ten or? I know it's more grants.
Yeah, it's much more grants. I, you know what, I don't know the percentage. I just see, I see the ledger sheet and really have never added it up.
It's just bigger, much bigger on the grant side than it is on the fee side, on the membership piece.
That's enough.
Okay. We have no real business tonight, right?
I have, one thing I want to report on, Mr. Chairman, on the master plan committee, I just want to report on progress. We've now had three meetings. And at the last meeting, which was last week, we did a few things. We decided to go forward with a public meeting and with a public poll that we will conduct electronically through either doodle or something more sophisticated that...
Survey Monkey, one of those, yeah.
Yeah, Survey Monkey. But there's, there's another, there's another thing that Chris Britton knows about that's more designed toward town public input. And we might be able to use that. And there's been some grants received by the town for, that we could use for funding some things there. And so, that's going to be coming up in the next couple of months. I've asked members of the committee to head up the public hearing. One member to public hearing, another member the, the poll. And they're both highly competent people, and I'm sure they'll do a great job. And we had one vote last week, which I want to tell you about. The members thought that it was important to have a vision statement. This is something that's become customary, at first in business, I guess, and now it's sort of flown its way into public life. And we had discussed it at several meetings. And we had, in the end, seven different proposals for a vision statement that were all printed out. And we enacted the first proposal, which was written for us by a, a member of the committee who was an engineer. And he's got experience in the private sector doing this kind of work. So, he developed a very short vision statement, which our master plan committee has adopted provisionally and subject to revision as needed later, after getting comment from people like us. Since it's our plan that's, we're going to have to vote on, any, you know, input at this point or later as well. And the wording of the vision statement is as follows. Develop and promote the town of Lee's historical significance, its natural assets, and small-town community spirit. Take that over and let me know what you think, or let, you know, write to the whole committee, or save it for after we give you our report in a year, and then tell us what you think, anything you like. I just didn't want you to be surprised by it. We're, we're looking to see if it's adequate. And, oh, and I need one thing from the committee, from the board. I need to have a vacancy filled. I recommend that to replace the vacancy created by the resignation of...
Susan Stone.
Mr. Tom Swift. Thanks, Beth. I recommend Susan Stone be appointed. Susan is member of the Town Historical Commission, and I've already given her her assignment and told her that she's a shoo-in for the position, so I hope you don't surprise me and vote no.
Okay.
But I move that Susan Stone be appointed to the master plan committee.
So moved. Is there a second?
Sure, I'd be happy to second that.
Okay. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Peg?
Hi.
Dave?
Hi.
Peter?
Yes.
Matt, you there?
Aye.
Buck Donovan, aye.
Thank you.
We have a full board, so I don't go to you right now.
Well, I totally understand.
Thank you, that's all, Mr. Chairman.
That's all. Okay.
Would that be a regular agenda item for each meeting? If there's a master plan?
It is.
It should be.
It should be. Yeah, I don't think it was, but it should be. We'll keep that going. Beth? Now, we're into any topic. Dave and I were discussing, when we started the meeting, there was some question, I guess, right, Dave?
Yes.
There's a property up on Paul Drive, I don't know how many are familiar with it, the old Charlie Garrity property. And there's a easement road that goes in that the Heberts owned. And they presented the town with a subdivision plan back in 2010. The property has since been sold, and the current owners are enacting that subdivision plan. That subdivision plan grants them the hundred and twenty-five feet of road frontage to build a lot up there. So, it's basically a one-lot subdivision that was approved back in 2010. And it seemed a little out of the ordinary. When they got their building permit, a few people were asking questions, but they're, it was all signed off on back then.
But has sufficient frontage or doesn't?
It does with, with a, with a subdivision, with the subdivision plan they submitted, yep.
Actually, it's part of the driveway.
Yeah.
And it's a, they have a right-of-way through the drive, on this driveway. And now, it's becoming a, well, state or town-built road. They're building it to town specs. I'm still a little questioned about, is it a town, when, if it will ever be a town-accepted road?
I don't, I think in the site plan, in the... Did you get a copy of that yet?
I did.
Okay. I think in that, it said that it will never be. And it's to be maintained.
I've heard other talk about, they may ask for that, but what happens with the rest of the lots up there?
There isn't. And it also says on there stipulation that it's not to be subdivided any further.
Because I don't know, have you ever been up to Charlie's place?
Long time ago.
Well, that's a long driveway. There's a lot of property on each side.
Yep.
The original owners, the Heberts, this property had bought it theirs.
Yeah.
They wanted to build a house, and there was a lot. They, there's only like three feet of road frontage on the, on Paul Drive. But through lawyers' dealings, the decision was made, came to the planning board for approval. It's a twenty-foot-wide road, and the utilities are supposed to be in the road.
Yep.
And I don't know, I went by today, the road's done. Hundred and twenty-five feet isn't much.
No.
So, I don't know who verified that the sewer and water's in the road.
Does the twenty-foot come from? It's got to be a twenty-four-foot minimum, right?
Actually, it, it looks, the, the plan I saw, it said that it's built and it cited the, the town code in there. So, I thought the same.
That's what I thought also, but on the plan that's shown, it came from Bercher Engineering, I believe.
Yeah.
Shows a twenty-foot-wide road.
And it cites the, the section of the, the town building code.
Was it the 2010 plan or the 2022 plan?
Ten.
Okay.
Always thought a subdivision, subdivision road for a minor street is twenty-four foot wide.
Well, see, that's just it, that we, it came into, is it a town road or is it a subdivision road?
Yeah.
So, is it a road at all, or is it just a driveway, improved driveway that's going to go to a single lot?
About all it is.
They got meat counters, a common driveway is eighteen feet.
But they, what a common driveway, you would have to have road frontage for both lots.
Correct.
Right?
That's correct.
Well, five, that's why we're talking about one lot.
No, if you did a common, the common driveway road.
So, this, this road is giving them the road frontage to build on this lot?
I was just wondering, where is it on Paul Drive? Would you, or?
If you come off of Lee Street, you take a right on Paul Drive, or actually Sharon.
Yes.
Go to the top, the very end, you have to bear to your left.
Okay.
Once you bear to that left, you can tend, continue maybe seven, eight hundred feet. And the road, again, takes another left. Just before you take that left, there's a driveway to your left.
Okay.
And that's where that road is.
My mother was born up there back in nineteen twenty-seven, coincidentally. Back when our grandfathers were around.
So, I don't understand what the issue is, Dave. What, why, why is it a concern here?
The issue was, when it came up, it came to the Board of Public Works. And we knew, I knew that we had a problem. We denied it because it didn't have road frontage.
What did, what did they ask for that you denied?
Well, they, they were looking for permits to tie into water and sewer for that lot.
Oh, I see.
And we said, it's a lot, but not, build a lot, has no road frontage.
But it's already been approved by the planning board.
It has since then.
It was, oh, you, I thought it was approved back in 2015.
Correct, but this came up before that, Matt.
Oh, I thought you were talking about recently.
Recently, it came up again. They asked for a tie into water and sewer. I had no idea, didn't remember, 2015, that it had gone to the planning board.
Oh, okay. Yeah, so they're all, they're all set. They got frontage off the, off an approved one-lot subdivision, basically.
Correct.
And I think it's a pri, I think it's a private road. It's not a, I don't even think it's a town road. I don't think, I don't think the town's going to maintain it up past...
If it's being built to town specs, they can ask if the town will approve it. I doubt we ever would, but they can ask because it's an acceptable road.
When I read the, the application, I, I just, there's some language in there that implies they will, it'll never be a town road.
Yeah.
So...
Because I didn't see that as a private road.
So, is it your opinion now, Dave, that they have obtained the frontage that they need or not?
Yes.
Okay. And if they have, then does your board, your other board, going to go back and grant them the application that they requested?
We actually gave them the, just because we knew there was a lawyer involved, I just didn't know exactly what the wordage was going to be. So, I wanted to check. I mean, we can always, we could have rescinded, but we would never, we've done, it would be the first time we ever did that. I just wanted to see where it came about and how it came about.
So...
So, I, right now, I'm satisfied with the results.
But where it stands right now is you turned them down, right? You denied the application?
No, we did not.
Oh, I thought you did.
No.
There was...
That was long ago.
But as I said, I just don't know who is doing oversight on it. Is it supposed to have the utilities in the road?
Yeah.
And I can't prove that it's in not, in the road, but in, in, on the private property.
I think this is a problem that comes up a lot based upon my few experiences, that the town approves a subdivision, it imposes conditions on this one, that will happen. And then, when the place is built, some years later, maybe it happens, maybe the stuff we thought it would happen, happens, maybe it doesn't. And we're left unsure of how to enforce it.
Well, we had that to sprint.
Yeah. Yeah. Up on Golden Hill.
Right.
Yeah.
And everything's hunky-dory now.
Is it?
Oh, no, I ran into him Saturday. It's not hunky-dory up there, believe me. Where, he's done with us, but it's not all great up there. I don't think it, I'm not sure if it ever will be.
I, I know the street, there's three houses being built up there as we speak, so, yeah. Undercorked, the binder course, course of dawn is not, because they finally got the utilities in it, right?
Yeah. Utilities are all in, transformers are set.
Oh, good. That's progress, then.
Yeah, that's, and...
Two and three houses going up in there now?
Yes.
Yeah, there's three houses so far. And I, I still, and to, you didn't, could not understand that, no, you're not going to get the power company to hook up to, to nothing there. I mean, we, right now, we have, doing a housing development in Schenectady, and we have, let's see, seen buildings up with fifty units, and there's no power yet. You know, they'll, they're setting the generator, the transformers next week, so that's just how, how the power company goes.
I still think that we need a little bit more follow-through with these projects. As they come, when they come through this board, and then if they're okay, they leave us, and they seem like, more than not, they come back to haunt us.
What if we got back to the old days with the building commissioner coming in? Not every meeting, but maybe once a month, to give us an update with that? Do you think that would?
If there's progress on the project?
Or just give us a report?
It wouldn't hurt. We don't really have any more sub, we don't really have any more subdivisions, and that's the thing. The, the one up on Golden Hill, actually, I don't even think there was anything wrong with that project at the end of the day. I think it was...
No, there wasn't. No, but I think...
It's just communication, that was it, but...
Try that. But there's other projects too, Matt. You know, Cork and Hearth is always a question, what's going on? Eagle Mill.
Oh, yeah, no, I agree with that. I just thought you meant subdivisions.
And there may be other subdivisions. I mean, or other places where land might be developed that we should keep up on. And I do agree with you, Buck, that it isn't a bad idea. We have concerns, I have the building commissioner maybe come in and just say... um, concerns to have the building commissioner maybe come in and just say, well, it's legal or it isn't, or just different things. Cause some, I do think some of the former building commissioners, whether people like them or not, they used to come in and they would give us, um, updates and they would sometimes, if a project was a little bit controversial or whatever, they would come in and say, well, you know, legally they can do this and the reason is X, Y, and Z, which I, I think the communication is a good thing, um, for us. I don't know when you would want to see him or, or her, um, but not a bad thing either. Communication's open.
Thoughts?
I, I, yeah, I do. I, I have two thoughts. One is I agree, uh, completely that having the building commissioner come in periodically would be a great idea. Uh, for all the reasons that you both have said, but also for the reason that one of our tasks, I believe, and our responsibilities is to make sure that zoning and subdivision regulations are working the way the town wants them to work. And if we never talk with the person who's enforcing those regulations, we're never gonna know about problems. So I think a regularly scheduled meeting, just to check in and see, you know, what's working, what's not working, would be really useful, regular thing to do. The other thing I would say is back to Dave's comment, um, it sounds like maybe we ought to look at the subdivision regulations and see if there's a change needed to, to improve the enforcement mechanism for conditions. I don't know if we can improve it. I think that, that what we're gonna find is that the only thing we could really do is impose a financial condition that would be like a deposit. And those are very expensive and developers hate them. Um. And why can't you just simply have the civil engineering firm that presents a plan, you guys approve it, it have them provide a David, a phased affidavit as construction is ongoing to provide insight on where they are. Is the utilities going in? Is the gas going in? Is the, uh, base going in? Binder coat going in? I mean, why not have?
You mean like every six months or year?
Right. Yeah, just a, a phased thing.
Conditions when we do one.
And provide an affidavit at the end of the project that they've done everything in the way, like control construction, as you would do in a building, do the same thing as far, I, I'm saying let the planning board have that as part of the regulation to instill that kind of a.
Also a covenant that never, we, we have to release on. And we don't release on until that.
Covenant, but I'm not sure that that covenant actually has any effect on the purchasers. The purchases up there on Golden Hill. You got three houses being built up.
Yeah.
Bored without, with the covenant being released and their lawyers never seemed to notice. So.
Yeah. And this one, that one up there looks like it, it's changed hands.
Yeah. So anyway, I don't know what the solution is. Maybe Conrad's thing sounds great. If we can do it, it sounds easier than.
I think next go around for sure.
Yeah.
Yep.
Because you're relying strictly on the building inspector, the ZBO to be out of the town's eyes. But if you had a civil engineer who's gotta put a stamp on it during the phase construction, just, it's another way of validating that they're doing what it's supposed to be doing. And what if they neglected to just send us those reports? What do we do then? Well, then do you get your enforcement officer?
Decent assist.
And do what?
It, well, they would be conditions on the, we, we would put those as conditions of the.
So if, that's the mechanism. If the engineer doesn't submit the required report, then the project, then the lots can't be sold or developed.
It would be conditions.
Okay. Like you're doing also. I mean, you're doing the same with the mill now. We have, uh, Mr. Cohen, his representatives come in and give you a, uh, an update on where they are. Well, I mean, we could do the same thing with the subdivision.
I remember back in two thousand fourteen and two thousand fifteen, Don Tirico, uh, came to every planning board meeting.
He did, oh.
He did.
Yep.
He did.
Um, and, and I'm not saying he, uh, building official would have to stay here the whole thing.
Right.
Fifteen minutes, give us an update, any questions, something like that.
Every other meeting would be enough to start with.
Yeah, the first, first of the month, whichever one he wants. Wanna run that by him? The next one. So yeah, we'll talk to him then. Yep.
Yeah, I do think it'd be good, I, I do think it'll be good to get him on the same page with, uh, providing us the, uh, sign permits. Um, after he approves them pretty quickly so we can review them.
Do, uh, any of you guys remember that when Tirico was there?
I, I do.
Was inter, because you, you, he was like the wild card of a meeting. It was tough.
Oh, you can't do that. Oh, you can't do that. Oh, you can't do that.
Well, you, you.
He was right.
He wa, well, but you'd get all the way through deliberation and you'd come up with a decision and he'd just lob that dart in. It's like, okay. It's like, God, Don.
He was dedicated though. He did attend.
Took it very seriously.
Yes.
Well, another concern I had with this one lot subdivision, uh, was it gonna open ten doors box with lots that are landlocked?
What do you think, Matt? Is it?
Uh, well, certain one lot subdivisions, no. It's, uh, listen, if you can get, uh, the frontage and, uh, I think, uh, I'm all for it. I'm glad, I'm glad we're getting another house up there and I'm glad, uh, we're gonna get some taxes.
Right. Sorry, that was in jest.
I know, but still.
A lot of people don't even know the story, so drop it and run.
Yep.
Hey.
I, and honestly, with, with subdivisions, I, um, there's a few pieces of property in town left, but I, I'm not sure if we'll see much of that anymore.
No.
The land in there.
I know one land, but I'm not sure what's gonna happen.
Wow.
Yeah, me too.
We talked about it.
Yeah, great subdivision.
It would be. Um, okay, uh, Beth handed me a letter. Um, it had Berkshire Gas on it, um, addressed to me and the planning board. And basically all it was, was their, uh, safety brochure. Okay. If anybody's wondering, um, so this application's for November, it looks like, Beth? Yeah. I don't know if we, can we even discuss it? I don't think we can. No.
We're all friends here. Is it, is it a site plan or?
Uh, special permit pre-existing non-conforming, so.
Oh, another one.
Another one. Um, front porch. Here, so, um, yeah, we'll set a date.
Yep. I have to get into it, but why would you have to have a special permit on a front porch? Because they use the word special permit to describe any variance or any variation from a existing zoning requirement for a non-conforming use. We have the permission for a non-conforming lot to allow further extensions of non-conforming. This is, but they use the word special permit. It triggers a whole panoply of procedural notices and that, you know, such. So it's not a dimensional variance as such. There's nothing dimensional about it?
Not really a var, it, it's dimensional, um, in the, the fact that the, the property is already non-conforming. Our, uh, chapter six, there is a, a section where they can make it, they can build on that non-conformity.
Expansion of a pre-existing.
Expansion, pre-existing through special permit from the planning board. So.
Commercial or residential just?
There is a discrepancy. Where's my, yes, there is certain things.
We don't have to talk about it now.
No, um, no, but really, commercial is.
That's what we granted, that's what we granted for the marijuana place.
Right, right. And because that was, if that had been residential, I don't think we would have had to talk about it because their construction, any construction in a non-conforming commercial has to have a special permit. If it doesn't make more non-conformity in a residential, private, it does, it wouldn't have to. Something like that. I wish, yeah. I gotta bring my iPad because I got, I, I really wanted to read that. I didn't wanna think about it.
Matt could look it up.
Oh, he's, he's probably watching television by now. Ah, there he is. All right, um, any other, um, things going on? Um, Beth, I have one. I, can we look into our site plan for the grow facility on one oh two? And, and I'm sure we had a dumpster enclosure on that. I mean, Matt has made sure of that. And I don't see one. Right, Matt? I'm sure you, you, on that site plan, we didn't miss that, did we?
No.
You've been, you've been adamant on those.
That's my one thing.
Even the amount of film that they had to put in, retaining wall behind that building.
Oh, yeah. It was massive.
I, I'd like to bring up, uh, and I don't know if there is a fix to it, but do we, um, look at bringing the RB line down that other side of one oh two across from the marijuana growth facility? Um, we have that line that cuts across. Um, it turns into RB. It's RB and then it turns into a, a residential and you know, here we go. We got the, the marijuana facility who's got, you know, the industrial, um, setbacks. And then on the other side of the corridor, you've got, um, uh, an RB setback, which is a big seventy-five foot setback. I, I'm not saying there's a solution, but I think we should look at it.
It, do you think that, Matt, or, or should we probably be looking into what to do with that split zone? Cause all, all those properties are all split zoned down through there. Right?
Um, yeah, um, I think, yeah, I think we just, I think we should definitely look at that.
But what do you think? And put, make both sides of the road industrial? Or come up with a commercial corridor?
May, maybe, maybe industrial on both sides. I mean, that would allow more um, commercial action. I mean, here we are on the um, southern side, or yeah, the southern side, we've got industrial and then we've got RB on the other side. I mean, it doesn't, does it make sense to have an RB with the different, I mean, I think we lost a possible, I think we lost a possible car dealership. Remember they came in to talk to us?
Well, well, we lost it because of the split zoning.
Right.
Yeah.
If they didn't have that, if they didn't have that seventy-five foot setback, they would have been able to fit. Um, I think, right?
Correct. Um, yeah, but I, I'm not sure if making that site industrial would be the solution. Cause.
I, I, and I, I don't know the answer, but I, I, I just thought maybe we should look at it.
Let's, as, as creating more of a commercial corridor there.
I mean, that's kind of what we want down there, right? On one oh two. I mean, isn't that kind of?
I think so.
But we don't have a lot of industrial land left.
That's it.
And, uh, maybe we should look at both.
And what it, what it would open up.
Industrial and then also moving that line, do away with it or move it back towards, more towards the residential area.
Yeah.
It's gonna be hard to develop this because it's pretty steep down there.
Right, but just, where they run into is the setback.
Is there a right hand in there too?
That's right. Not that, uh, minor, minor. Over by the motel, there's a minor wetland and the.
How should we undertake this, Mr. Chairman? Should we want to appoint a subcommittee to look at it? Couple of members?
Um, I, I, I think, let's lay out a map, put it on the agenda for next time. I think it's a good idea. Yep.
I mean, do we, do we just look at, um, do we, do we just look at this section or do we, do we look at?
Let's, uh, let's brainstorm a little bit next meeting. We're, we're pretty light on, I mean.
Bring your maps, bring your maps.
Yeah, bring, we're gonna lay out one big map here on the table and we'll, we'll look it over. And you can have yours at home while you.
I have, I have mine, I have mine hanging on the wall right now.
Okay.
Do we have to, are we gonna be involved at all in the change of use from where the Lee Tile and Stone is now? Is it gonna become a grow facility?
It is.
Yeah.
Lee Tile and Stone is gonna be a grow?
Yeah, I heard they're closing the door and, uh, the guy on Husatonic Street is buying the property.
Didn't, don't they have property in?
They do.
Okay.
We, we approved a growth facility in Corey Hill.
That's right. Yeah.
Yes, you did.
But I don't know, I, I thought I saw some down there, Matt, for sale again. I might be wrong. I thought I saw.
Lots left.
Okay.
But, uh, I, I know the selectmen have already had a special permit or something. They've been working with them.
Huh. Now we'll see a site plan on it.
Yeah.
That's, and then they do the, they do the special permitting.
On one oh two?
Yes.
The tile place?
Lee Tile and Stone?
Oh.
They've sort of grown their lot. There's, the lot is full of stone.
Already.
Would it be indoor or, we don't know because we haven't seen it.
I would, they're gonna use the buildings to grow them myself.
It's so close to the road, it would have to be indoors.
Indoors.
Yeah.
Relocating the stone? Stone place to be relocated?
Or maybe just closing. He might have enough.
I heard he's closing. He's gonna sell all, he's, uh, one of his employees wants to buy the equipment, but he doesn't know where to go.
Hmm. Any changes?
Yep. All right, anything else, folks?
We, uh, do we wanna invite Mr. Cohen in for our November meeting in case?
Would love to.
We, uh, haven't seen anything happening up on the lot.
He's got, you want, should I talk for him and tell you what he's gonna tell you? Heard that line so many times.
That's an easily cynical.
I guess some, uh, oceanfront in Arizona.
They were, uh, they were just waiting on the funding, weren't they? Right about, no, they were hoping maybe like right now, any, any time to hear.
I kept hearing rumors, people saying, well, they're gonna, they're gonna start tearing down the houses in November. That's what I've heard, several places. When it, you know, it could be like the, one of the urban legends, you know?
No, he told us. They, they told us last time, Ber, Berkshire Housing and they told us last time when they came here for the update that.
Oh, I'll, I'll, I, I don't think Jeff Cohen's the guy to give us the answers. I think more so Berkshire Housing because they're, they're handling the funding. So I'll, I'll reach out to them and see what answers.
Yeah, but I'm, I'm saying, the last time they were here, can you hear me?
Gotcha.
We hear you, Matt.
Yeah, the last time they were here, they told us that they were waiting for the round, around October. And they were, uh, November, they were hopeful that they would be successful in their grant funding. Um, so I think they're just waiting on, I mean, that was the latest update, right?
Yeah, I thought it was September and then there would not be another funding until January.
Okay, maybe it was September, right? So, yeah.
More new funding, otherwise there would have been something in the eagle about, um.
Right.
A demolition permit at this point. So what was the strategy of getting a demolition, demolition permit now rather than wait until the funding comes through?
Well, that's good. Let's hope.
I think to show progress.
Well, it does show progress. I agree with that.
They had a site plan approved two years ago, right?
Yeah.
Yes.
How long is that good for?
Two years.
And they had their groundbreaking a year ago, so.
It is good for two years though.
Well, there's a str, I'm, I'm sorry.
No, go ahead.
There's a strategy that if a special permit's come up in, I don't know, uh, February, March of next year, if he activates a special, activates a demolition permit and then raises the buildings, is that gonna activate his special permit in an effort to save the special permit to preclude, preclude you guys from?
Boy, not renew. I mean, we would, we would renew it anyway. I, I don't think he'd have a problem renewing it.
The value of the property right now is, it's obviously the dirt, it's the building, and more importantly, it's the engineering, the permits. If you take away the permits, then that's gonna diminish the value of the, of the, of the asset. I, I can't put myself in his head, but I would think that as the second anniversary approaches, he's at least thought about the idea, what would he, what would it take to keep that permit alive? Exactly. That's what I'd be doing.
Good.
I agree. I agree with you here.
When, when was that? January or?
Well, that's what they, that's what they said at that meeting. Beth could, or Beth could.
The, um.
The last year in the mill approval would, would have been about two years ago. Check the date on it, just.
Yeah, you wanna check, can you check the date on that?
December, I think. Yeah. I might be wrong. I remember it was a big meeting.
I'll reach out to Berkshire Housing people and see where they are with their funding. Cause like Dave, you know, Dave could tell us what Jeff Cohen's gonna. You got it down.